Hi Amor, how are you? Amor, can you put on your camera and unmute yourself? Doesn't look like you're muted. Hi Victor.
Hi.
Do you want to put on your camera? If you don't feel comfortable, that's okay. But if you don't mind, there you go. Hey, nice to meet you. Amor, we've met before. How are you?
Yeah.
Alright, excellent. So let's go ahead and get started. I'm recording this for students who cannot attend, okay? And I thought what we would do is we would go over the expectations for the midterm exam, and then open it up to any questions that you might have regarding concepts that you'd like to go over. And if we have time, we can begin taking a look at the questions. You'll have access to the questions at 1:00, but we can go ahead and pre-like examine those. Alright, so I'm gonna share my screen, okay? Alright. Alright, so let me take us to our... Are you able to see my screen? Are you seeing the screen? Yes, I'm assuming that the answer is yes. Okay, so let's just take a look at the expectations for the midterm exam. Scrolling down, so there's two sections. So just make sure that when, you know, that on midterm exam information, that's sort of the expectations for the exam. And then when you click on midterm exam questions, that's where you'll actually be able to download the questions at 1:00 today, okay? And so, um, for the midterm exam questions here, um, that, or for the information, okay? Let's talk about, uh, so how much the exam is worth? So the exam's worth 150 points, which is 15% of your final grade. Um, and the exam is open book, um, and so you can use, this isn't a closed book exam. I mean, it's like a take-home exam, obviously. And so you can use your, um, you can use your textbook, you can use the lectures, um, you know, any notes that you've taken, uh, the course commentary, etc. So whatever you want to use is, is, is available for you to use, okay? You should not be really using outside research, okay? Um, the materials that you need to, um, basically answer these questions can all be found in the course materials. So actually, I'd kind of advise against using outside, um, materials to answer the, the, the questions because I want you to demonstrate that you understand the course materials, okay? Um, so there, when you download the exam, you'll see that there is, um, there are six questions to choose from, um, and you choose four of the questions, okay? And that, um, that the maximum length of the exam, I'm sort of thinking two pages for each answer. It may be a little bit longer than that, and maybe a little bit less than that. Um, so the total exam should be about eight double-spaced pages. Um, and don't worry if you go over, you're a little under. It's totally fine. I mean, these questions that you're gonna see are, um, you know, they're, they're kind of comprehensive questions. So if you could easily go over two pages in answering, and that's fine. Um, if your exam is really a lot less than eight pages, you know, like six pages or five pages, you're gonna want to go back and sort of reexamine your answers and make sure that you're providing enough evidence, okay? Um, and then, uh, I just want to point out that you should, you should submit your midterm exam as one complete document. Don't submit, um, separate documents for each question. Uh, just, um, you know, answer, when you, when you download the questions, uh, you can just answer them right on the exam itself, okay? And then submit it as one document. And then, this is, you know, what I'm looking for in terms of what constitutes the, the best exams, okay? You'll see on the questions that, um, uh, you'll see on, once you get the questions, that there are kind of like our discussions, there are multiple prompts, right? And so my expectations is that you answer each of the prompts, okay? And some of the prompts will be like, like descriptive, like describe the standard, or describe the lemon test in the cases that have been used to, um, support this, uh, create the three prongs of the lemon test, right? Um, but then some of the prompts will be sort of like, there's no, like, so there's a right or wrong answer, right? Like, i- if you, you know, in terms of what the lemon test is, for example, there's a right or wrong answer for that, okay? But some of the prompts, there's no right or wrong answer. So it could be asking you the question of, like, okay, do you think that the lemon test is a, a good test to use in establishment clause cases? Uh, if so, why? Um, if not, why not, right? And looking at some of the alternatives that the court has considered, which do you think might be better tests? There's no right or wrong answer to that question, but those would be evaluated by how well you use course materials to support your viewpoint, okay? So some of the prompts, right or wrong, some, you know, some are just sort of your own opinion, but you're using evidence to support your opinion, okay? And let me just give you some advice, answer all the prompts, okay? If you miss a prompt, if you don't answer it, then you'll lose points. And also, don't throw away the, the, the prompts that have no right or wrong answer. Those critical thinking prompts are sometimes really, that's what I'm looking for to determine whether or not an exam deserves an A, right? Um, because you're using your own critical thinking skills and the material from the course to answer those questions. Sometimes students will be like, "The lemon test is a good test because it's easy to apply," or something, and it's like, that's not gonna be good enough, right? Like, so do, like, don't throw away the, um, critical thinking prompts. Uh, there is an expectation that you'll pull upon all the course material. So sometimes I have students who like, like, use just the lectures to answer the, the, the questions, that's not gonna be good enough. Sometimes I have students who just use the, what's in the textbook, that's not gonna be good enough because I try to introduce, like, new material or, um, you know, in the lectures, okay? Uh, you can pull upon our course discussions, although I try not to replicate stuff in the exam, like, because you, you know, your competency has already been evaluated on the discussions. Uh, but yeah, any, anything from the discussions, articles that you want to use in order to, like, help, you know, your answer these questions, that's great. And even though your, 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 your paper for the most dangerous branch isn't due yet, you have until after spring break to turn that in. If you've been reading that and you find that there's some things in that book that would help you answer questions, go for it. That's totally included in the course material, okay? Um, and so answer the prompts, don't throw away the critical thinking prompt, um, use all the course material, and you don't have to do that for each question. Like, for, it's, it'll, it'll be evaluated for the whole exam. So for one question, you only use, like, the textbook and maybe the course commentary, that's fine. The next one, you're using lecture and textbook, that's fine, right? You don't have to do it for each of the questions, but like, in the whole, I'd expect that you pull upon all the course materials. Um, and then write it in a clear manner. And, uh, and then, uh, uh, so make sure you're proofreading. And I have there that, about providing in-text citations. So you don't have to be fancy about that. You can just, like it says there, topic five, lecture one, or, you know, uh, the textbook and give the page number, right? Um, so, you know, if you are doing, like, direct references or using direct quotes and commentary, uh, make sure that you do reference it from the textbook, okay? Alright, so that is, I'm gonna stop the share right now, bring it back to us. So those are kind of my expectations, okay? Um, for the exam. Uh, so what do you think? Any questions about, like, what I'm sort of looking for for? Is this Amor? Okay, go on. Amor, I'm having a hard time hearing you. You wanna chat, you wanna, um, write your question in the text? Look, I mean, the chat.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yeah. Yep.
Okay, it's kind of glitched, so I don't, I don't know if you can hear me clearly or not, but, um, just let me, didn't get my question. So my question is, uh, uh, like, I'm, I'm confused on this question. I mean, um, it says, uh, "What are the benefits of the Supreme Court exercising judicial view and what are the drawbacks?" Can you, like, give me a little bit of insider clarity on, um, this question?
I think you're muted.
I cannot hear you.
Shit, sorry about that. Sorry for saying shit. Um, so, are you looking at a learning? Amor?
I'm just looking at my notes and, uh, what you said it might be on the exam. Um, and these two questions are kind of like confuse me because I don't think I was understanding the readings right. Or maybe I was and I was just overcomplicating things. But, um, the question says, uh, you know, it asks for the benefits and the drawbacks of the Supreme Court exercising judicial review. Um, could you give me any clarity behind this so I can understand this a little more?
Yeah, definitely. And so, um, judicial review is the power that the Supreme Court has to nullify law, and that would be federal law, state law, and even local law. If those laws are deemed unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. Okay, does that make sense?
Yes.
So, you know, that's the main power that the Supreme Court has. It is, um, it, it comes from Marbury versus Madison, okay? So it's kind of a created power, it's not actually in the Constitution. But the question about, you know, the benefits and the drawback of judicial review and the Supreme Court exercising judicial review, let me open it up to the other students and see what they have to say. Like, we, we understand the concept of judicial, judicial review, that, that laws can be found to be unconstitutional and therefore basically canceled by the Supreme Court. What's the benefit of judicial review, exercising judicial review, and what are some of the drawbacks of that? What do you guys think?
Well, I mean, I guess you could say a benefit would be laws that are unconstitutional, can be, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, cut down or, uh, stopped, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Um, but I guess a drawback of that, the same, or at the same time, a drawback could be that, uh, it does kind of put a check on the legislature. Or the, so if there's something like the people want and then their representatives vote for, it can also be, uh, taken down. I guess you, it's something kind of like that.
Yeah, definitely. That makes a lot of sense. And so, on the one hand, it's like, if you have a constitution and the constitution says that you can't establish a religion, or that you can't abridge somebody's freedom of speech, or that you can't, you know, tread upon their exercise of religion, it's in the constitution, right? So if you have a law that's actually doing that, censoring people, telling them that they can't exercise their religion, it seems like you need this body that basically says, hey, that law is unconstitutional, right? Because our constitution needs to be upheld, it's an important document. Um, and so we turned to the Supreme Court to basically be the decider of laws that determining whether laws are constitutional, and if they're unconstitutional, then you need to, you know, get rid of that law. I mean, John Marshall actually writes in Marbury versus Madison, it's like, what's the point of having a constitution if laws can't be deemed void because they're unconstitutional, right? It's sort of like, it makes a mockery of the constitution in a way. But Brandon, you bring up a great point, that you've got nine, and sometimes less than nine, unelected justices who are overriding the will of vast majorities of people, right? Because you have the majority of people elect people that serve in the Senate, and the House of Representatives, and our state legislatures, and our city councils. And to have nine people, and sometimes just five people, right? Because like a 5-4 decision, majority rules. I mean, that's sort of like, in a way, you could say, is that really democratic, small d? Because democracy is rule of the people. Well, when the Supreme Court exercises judicial review, it's the rule of five people or nine people, right? And so that's one of the downsides of, of, one of the many downsides of judicial review. Uh, Amor, does that make sense to you? And I muted you just because we were getting some feedback, so unmute yourself.
Oh, I apologize. Um, so, um, yeah, that does very, uh, very much to clarify, uh, my question, uh, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, hey, no problem. That's what these study sessions are for. And also, I want to draw your attention to, um, in the textbook, there's like a table that illustrates like, what we just talked about is only one sort of complaint about judicial review. But in your textbook, they like level several benefits of judicial review, and several drawbacks of judicial review. And so make sure that you take a look at that table, and I, I don't have my textbook right in front of me, I mean, I have an e-version of it, I could pull it up. But there's a table in there, so make sure you take a look at that. And spoiler alert, there's a question about.
Okay.
So that was a good question to ask, Amor. Um, what about other questions? Sophia, do you have any questions or concepts you'd like to go over?
I'm not, not offhand, no, I don't know any.
Okay.
Um, could you, yeah, uh, could you go over the preferred freedoms test? And how that's related back to the, uh, clear and present danger test?
Yes, great. And so, um, the test that Brandon is referring to is the, um, so for topic six, um, uh, we looked at the different tests that the court uses when, um, figuring out whether or not a person's speech should be protected. And, and so we start, start high with the clear and present danger test, and then we go low to the bad tendency test. And then we work our way back up to the preferred freedoms doctrine. That comes from footnote four in the Caroline, um, decision, which that doesn't really matter so much. But basically, what the preferred freedom doctrine says from that footnote is, it, it, it presents this idea that there are certain freedoms in our constitution, in our Bill of Rights, that are of extreme importance. Um, and one of those liberties is the freedom to speak, right? The right to freely express yourself. And so Caroline, uh, the preferred freedom document is basically saying that, is we're looking at liberties, some are so essential to democratic governance that we've got to give it extra super special protection. And they identify speech as one of those things, okay? And then they go on to say that when somebody's speech is being curtailed, that the burden is placed on the government to demonstrate that there's a really good reason for burdening that person's speech, right? For curtailing that person's speech. And so they introduced the concept of strict scrutiny, right? They talk about that in the text, it's sort of like strict scrutiny is saying that two things. It's saying that the burden of proof is placed on the government. Rather than the burden of proof being placed on the individual, like, if you don't use strict scrutiny and my speech is curtailed, like, I gotta go to the court and say, "Let me tell you, court, why this law is harmful to me," right, and to individuals, "I have to prove that it's a bad law." Strict scrutiny says the government had, it assumes that the law is unconstitutional, right? And the government needs to make a case for why it's constitutional. Furthermore, they have to use a compelling interest. So that kind of strict scrutiny brings us, like, when you think about the Sherbert v. Werner standard, it's basically, you can't just say that there's a legitimate reason for this law, like, oh, we want to make sure that your speech isn't too loud, or, you know, that it's not taking place at midnight, right? That's a legitimate reason. You need to have a compelling reason to, to restrict speech, okay? And so the preferred freedom doctrine is basically, it sets the stage for the future of how the Supreme Court evaluates, uh, freedom of speech cases. Because it's basically saying that, like, we can't, we, there's a danger associated without, with not giving these really strong protections to freedom of speech. And so in a way, it kind of, and I guess in a way, um, you know, you're asking how it relates to the clear and present danger test. In a way, it, um, it builds off of that, right? Because in the, in the Schneck decision, um, you know, the court talks about how important freedom of speech is, right? And that people, that we should have, that there should be a, a really important reason for treading upon somebody's speech, that their speech has to present a clear and present danger to the community. And if it doesn't do that, it can't just have a tendency, like, maybe it'll be a danger, no, it's gotta actually be a danger, right? And they did find that Schneck presented a danger, right? Because he was basically trying to interfere with the military's ability to get people to sign up for the draft, right? And so in a way, it, it kind of reinforces what's outlined in the clear and present danger test, and then reinforced in the, you know, the Brandenburg test, the imminent lawless danger test, that's the test we use today. And so in a way, it elevates the freedom of speech, and basically makes it front and center, um, for the Supreme Court to say, boy, when laws are trying to tread, tread on people's speech, Supreme Court has to pay really big attention to that, really close attention to that. Uh, preferred freedom doctrine also opens the gates. It's like, woo, people are like, it, the burden's on the state, so we're assuming that this law is unconstitutional, and so we're gonna bring these cases to the Supreme Court because the chances of the Supreme Court finding these laws unconstitutional is stronger. Now, as we know, right after the preferred freedom doctrine, you get the red scare and it goes back down, right? But that going back down with the Dennis case, you know, we, it goes right back up, and that's where we've been since the 1970s. Um, and so spoiler alert, there will be a question on this on the exam, not specifically about the preferred freedom doctrine, but about chronicling the shift from Schneck to Brandenburg, right, with the test. And there will be a question about, the, the critical thinking question is one about the test that we have today, this high standard. Um, is that a good test? And also, do we think that there's a benefit to that shifting, right? Because you could make an argument that there is, like, when there's, you know, I used the example, I think, in lecture about the uprising on the Capitol, right? When you have marauding bands of domestic terrorists attacking the Capitol, and we're like, well, freedom of speech, this is a consequence of it. We might think differently about that, and same with hate speech, we're gonna be talking about that after, um, spring break. So Brandon, does that, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Sophia, Amor, Victor, do, did that make sense? Are we good? Any clarification on that? Sophia, what are you thinking?
Yeah, um, oh, I, I couldn't, uh, register on what you were saying about the preferred freedoms doctrine in respect to how high standards are, was that, how?
Right, well, so I would just encourage you to, um, you know, reread that part about the footnote four in the textbook. And, you know, it talks about it in the preferred freedoms doctrine part of the textbook. And so it just, it's, it's just a court ruling that, and it's, it's actually a footnote in a court ruling that is just sort of saying the things that I just said, that, like, we really need to protect speech, the burden of proof needs to be on the government. And, um, related but unrelated is that it also says that when people are being racially discriminated against, that also deserves strict scrutiny. Um, so even though this isn't a class on civil rights, it, you know, that footnote for this tiny little footnote that like really sets the stage in terms of, um, uh, understanding why freedom of speech is so important, and helping us understand why the Supreme Court has really protected speech to, like, a really robust level, almost to a fault, one might argue. Cool.
Gotcha.
We're at the highest level we've ever been?
Yes, okay, I mean, and so your textbook is a little squishy. Uh, in the old editions of the textbook, it spent more time on the Brandenburg case. And so, um, in this version of the textbook, I don't know why they did this, is that they're, they're just sort of like, they kind of gloss over the Brandenburg case. But in my lecture, I explained the test that we use, it's the imminent lawless standard tax, um, standard or test. And so I explained that in the lecture, so, you know, make sure you review that when answering that question. Um, that would be an example, like, if a student just focused on the clear and present danger test and didn't add to it the imminent lawless test, um, then that would be more like a B answer, but the A answer's gonna say, "I know it wasn't in the textbook so much, but we talked about it in lecture." They do mention it in the textbook, but they, they gloss over, and I'm, I'm not sure why. But the imminent lawless, uh, the imminent lawless action test is, is very, very similar to the, the clear and present danger task, right? It's just technically the task that's used today. And that's a super strict standard. It basically is saying that in order to impinge on somebody's speech, that, um, their speech has to, that bring about a, a, a great harm, a great danger, and that that speech is gonna bring it about real soon, like, imminently, right? Uh, and, and that also, um, that, uh, that, uh, that there's a clear connection between the speech and the danger itself, right? And so it's really similar to the clear and present danger test, it's just in lecture, I tried to like, just give it like the three sort of prongs, you know, that, that is needed for that. So make sure you review that in answering that question. But right, it makes it really, really difficult to, um, infringe on speech. I mean, the Brandenburg case I talked about in lecture, it's about a Ku Klux Klan member who, like, they're at a Ku Klux Klan rally, and they're like saying that they're gonna pick up arms and have revengement or something, like some word that doesn't exist, go Ku Klux Klan, um, on, on Jewish folks and black people, right? And it's like, pick up arms, and they're like, you know, eh, they said that, but it didn't really bring about this imminent danger. So it's, I mean, it's difficult to demonstrate imminent danger, and it, as far as I know, there has been no case, the closest that we came, and, and it, it was a case that didn't come to the Supreme Court, but the closest that we came was, um, there was a website about 10 or 15 years ago that was posting the names, addresses, children, and the, um, children's schools of abortion providers. It was this abortion, like, website where you could go and get this information for abortion providers. And that, um, you know, 10 years or so ago, this doesn't happen as much now, but people would actually kill abortion providers. They would go to that website, and they would get that information, and they would go to abortion clinics and kill abortion providers. And they would also, like, harass their kids coming home from school and stuff like that, because they were like these, like, true ideological right-to-life people, right? And it's great to be right-to-life, but, you know, just like with your religion, there's gotta be limits on the way you exercise your beliefs. And killing abortion providers is, uh, a clear and present danger, no doubt. Uh, and so, but a lower court found that that actually, that that speech did meet the level of the imminent lawless danger, uh, but it never made its way to the Supreme Court. But, and some on the court were like, no, just because you list the names, those are like names that are available in the public telephone book, you know? And there's nothing saying go and kill these people, right? But they were saying in the context of abortion killings that were, uh, providers that was going on, so. Um, it's never been applied, um, you know, to political speech like that. Uh, you know, it's applied to things like, um, you know, publishing the, uh, like, the coordinates of people who are in the military and the military field and those sorts of things, and to harassment and that kind of language. Cool. Any other questions? You want to take a look at the questions that you're gonna, would that be helpful, since you're gonna see them in a little way? You want to take a look at the questions? Alright, so let me share my screen again. Alright. Alright, let someone tell me, um, are you able to see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I think, like, if you click on it, you might be able to enlarge it, but anyways, well, I'll ma, I'll try to make it as large as I can. Alright, at the beginning of the exam, it just gives you some, don't forget to save this to your hard drive. Oh, shoot, we've got 10 minutes left.
I think you froze, at least, I don't know for anyone else.
Am I frozen now?
No.
Okay, I got a warning saying we only have 10 minutes left, because it's only 40 minutes, but we have 10 minutes, so we'll, we'll be fine. Uh, so anyways, so there's one question, um, that had, so you had a discussion post that had to do with the legal, um, perspectives, originalism, textualism, star deesis. So this question is asking you to not replicate that discussion, but that in class, we talked about legalism, and we had our discussion on legalism. But then in the textbook, it talks about realism. Um, that is that justices have ideologies, and justices have like an active view of the court. So on, in pages 20 to 39, it, you know, talks about legalism, which we spend a lot of time in class talking about, but not as much on realism. So this question allows you to compare and contrast legalism and realism, okay? So this question allows you to compare and contrast legalism and realism, okay? And so, um, you know, just what are the main tenets? How are legalism and realism similar? How are they different? And then which do you think does the best job of explaining um the way justices make decisions on the court? And otherwise, what, in other words, are they motivated by judicial theories of interpreting the constitution? Or are they motivated by ideology and activism or restraint? I mean, just, you know, a little bit, there's other things you would include. That's the first question. Let's just go through the questions and then I'll see if you have any questions about the question. Um, number two, what do you know? There's a question about judicial review. And so, um, you know, it, it's uh, I want you to describe the facts briefly of the Marbury versus Madison case. And I want you to talk about and define judicial review. Um, I want you to talk about Marshall's opinion in judicial, in Marbury versus Madison. He makes a really strong argument about why we need you to show review, so I just want you to touch upon that. Um, and, and talk about whether you agree with him. And is it democratic that the court made up of nine unelected officials has such a broad power of judicial review? Which is exactly what we were just talking about, but there's more in the textbook about that, okay? So there's a question about judicial review. Um, hey, it wouldn't be complete if you didn't have a, a rocket boat, like a riveting question about incorporation. Uh, and so, uh, this question is about the court's approach to incorporation of the Bill of Rights. And it's very, it's very pretty straightforward, uh, you know, what does the decision about Barron v. Baltimore tell us about incorporation? What role does the Fourteenth Amendment, the two clauses in the Fourteenth Amendment play in the incorporation process? Um, what is the importance of the Palco decision in, in the way that the Bill of Rights has been incorporated? And then finally, the critical thinking question is, um, the Supreme Court did not totally incorporate the Bill of Rights. It went liberty by liberty by liberty. They do selective incorporation. And not, as we know, not all the liberties have even been incorporated. Um, and so it, it asks you, is that the right approach? Like, is it better to do selective than, than total incorporation? Okay, so that's the critical thinking piece. Um, you have a question about how the court has defined religion. So there's a whole lecture on that and they talk about it in the case. Um, that's a topic that I'm interested in and I'd love to get your take on it. Usually we talk about it like face-to-face class, like, do you think that they've gone too far with the, with the, the, the way that it did define religion? So this question gives you that opportunity. It, life wouldn't be complete unless you had a Lemon v. Kurtzman question. So if you love the Lemon test, you can answer a question about the Lemon test, okay? Pretty straightforward, explain the three prongs, the cases that it comes from, and that there's disagreement on the court about its usefulness. What do you think? Is it a good task? And then, this is a little tricky, but I just couldn't decide. So you can, the, the sixth question, you have two options, six A or six B. You can only answer one of those. You can't answer six A or six B. Okay, I've highlighted it. I think it's pretty straightforward. And if you're like, screw that, I don't want to answer any of those, you don't have to, because you only have to answer four questions for the exam. But I thought some of you might want to talk about the standard that the court has used for the, the speech, right? So it's like from Schneck to Bradenburg, which we were just talking about, in evaluating, explaining and evaluating those tasks. Or, um, you know, I love the symbolic speech cases of United States um versus O'Brien and Texas v. Johnson. The draft burning case, the draft burning card case and the, and the uh case having to do with uh the, the burning of the flag. And so I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to talk about that if you wanted to, because you might be like, ah, tests and standard, ho-hum, right? I mean, it's not, but it's more technical. Uh, but this just gives you an opportunity to explain what symbolic speech is. Um, talk about the two cases, how they're similar and different, and if you agree with the ruling of the ca, the court. I mean, there's other stuff in there as well, okay? So those are the questions that you are going to be tangling with. What do you think? Are you freaking out? Hopefully not. What do you, does that seem to? Amor is a little freaking out there. We have three days, um. And while I can't give you answers to the questions, if you have a question about the question as you're reading through those, you can drop me an email and, or a text, or uh, and, or we could even meet and talk about it a little bit. Although I'd rather just do it during, via text and in email, just because I can't give you the answers, right? But if you need clarity, I can give you clarity on like, I'm not really understanding what this question is answering, asking. Victor, or, or yeah, go, go, Amor. Yes?
Okay, um, are the, are the questions, are each of the questions two pages double spaced?
Uh, yeah, you know, I always tell my students, um, answer the question, right? And I think, I think you can answer the question in two pages, double-spaced. Could be a little bit longer, right? A lot shorter is probably for these questions, probably not so much. Um, but answer the question, do what you need to do to answer the question. And don't tell me everything you know about it. I mean, like, sometimes I have students who are like, the Bill of Rights are the first time amendments of the United States Constitution, and they'll tell me, you know, like, like for the case about the incorporation of the Bill of Rights. No, you don't need to tell me everything you know, right? Just answer the question. Um, and, and like, imagine that I am a jury and you're trying to prove to me beyond a reasonable doubt that you understand this material. And so you don't need to like pile it on, right? You just need to like demonstrate to me that you understand these concepts and that you understand the material. So, you know, be judicious in the way you answer the question. Um, but make sure you answer all the prompts, answer them to the level that convinces me that you know what that, after you're talking about, right? Um, and then you should probably be pretty good. Ballpark, two, two pages, double-spaced for each answer. Goes over a little bit, it's not the end of the world, a little under, answer the question, you answer the question.
Perfect, thanks.
Do you want us to um, like cite where we got information after we give it? Like, if we use the textbook, do you want us to put in parentheses that we use the textbook or use like one at the end or not at all?
Um, if you're using like a direct quote or direct idea, then you'll want a parentheses and like you can just put rights, liberty, justice, or just like RLJ page number. And then that just indicates to me that like, like sometimes when students don't do that, I'm like, it's, it can be confusing, because it's like, are they just taking stuff directly out of the textbook? And that's not good. It's a broad idea, like explaining what judicial review is and you're doing in your own words. You don't need to do a text citation. But if you're using like a direct quote from a case or a direct like idea from the textbook, just, yeah, just do an in-text citation. RLJ comma, page two thirty-nine or whatever. And then you can do the same for the lecture.
Are you not looking for a works cited by any chance? Is the, is the paper MLA or what?
Uh, no, you know, I don't really care. I mean, like, because it's not like a paper, paper, just parentheses, LR, uh, oh, RLJ page, you know, topic five, lecture one or whatever. That's all I'm looking for. And you don't need a works cited page, because like, like I, I know the citation for the textbook and stuff. If you are using outside material, you would do that, but like I said, don't use outside material. Oh, I'm not gonna, I mean, you're not, I'm not gonna take off points. Alright, we've got less than a minute, so unfortunately, uh, we're probably gonna have to close this out, so it just doesn't go to black. Thank you so much for showing up for the um, the study session. And I did get your feedback for the second semester, half the semester. I will try to set up some other um, times that work better for people. I know later in the day works better for a lot of people, so. Alright, cool, I'll, I'll post this on the Facebook, Facebook, Jesus. Uh, I'll post this on the canvas so that you can read the, um, so that you can re-watch it if you're so inclined, but so that other students can watch it too. Alright, cool. Thank you so much. I'll talk to you guys later.